Welcome, everyone, to Weaver County Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bollos. I'm joined by Commissioner Gage Frower and Commissioner Jim Harvey. We will invite the audience to rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with us, and after which Commissioner Frower will give us an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we come together on this beautiful summer day you've given us as citizens of this great country in Weaver County. We give thanks for this country and the freedoms and opportunities we enjoy as citizens. We also give thanks for the celebrations we enjoy this time of year and the time we have to spend with our family and friends and the memories that come from our family and friend gatherings. Father, we ask for your blessings today to ensure that decisions made are made with your guidance and inspiration are made in the best interest of the public. And, Father, please bless those in our community that may suffer from health or other issues that they may soon overcome those issues and return to their full, healthy lifestyle. We say this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Frower? Item D on our agenda, Commissioner's comments. Today we have a stall of fame, as you can tell by the huge crowd we have. I think the Assessors' Office might be the most supportive department in our county. You guys show up. This stall of fame is going to be awarded to Brady Anderson, and I just want to take a second and read the Bravo Award that was the catalyst for this choice. Due to major staff changes in our office, Brady got thrown into a very vital role in closing our tax role. His knowledge and work ethic went way beyond his normal job duties in the last few months. We could not have finished without him. I'm going to invite Jared up to say a few words, and then we'll present Brady with his coveted keychain. You can come up, too, Brady.
Thank you for recognizing our office. It was, and I'm glad that most of the staff could be here as well. It was quite the experience this year, changing systems, changing leadership, and a lot of us found different roles that we came in. And Brady really stood out, stood up. There were Saturday, many Saturdays that he came in, early mornings, extra hours, not just because he was asked to, but because, deep down within him, he wanted to figure out and wanted to figure out and help us get this task accomplished. Like many of those in our office, Brady has a desire to really do what's right, to follow the practice and principles, and not just to get A answered, but to get the correct answer. And I am so appreciative. I've learned so much from Brady, and I'm excited. We've created, as a result, we've created a new data analytics team, and Brady is an integral part of that data analytics team, which the rest of the office will be able to lean on as we go forward. And so this is a lot of innovation that he's responsible for as well. So I am so grateful, so thankful for Brady.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Brady, do you want to say anything?
I think too much praise is being heaped in my direction, and honestly, all of these people here, and many who are not here in this meeting deserve as much and more credit for holding things together and accomplishing the goal. So thank you, Commissioner, and I hope everyone can appreciate the work that the whole office did.
We appreciate you and your example and your dedication. Thank you so much. We want a picture, Brady. All right, smile on three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Maybe it is. All right, Agenda Item E, Agenda-related public comments. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item that is on the agenda, you're welcome to do so now. We ask that you state your name and your city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
My name is John Loomis. I'm a resident in Eden, 4868 Eagle Ridge Drive, and I'd like to just make a quick comment on the 4100 North extension that's being put in. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioners Harvey and Frower for coming up and meeting with us on Friday to look at it and see just what the impacts of that is and trying to help us mitigate both the sound and the visual impacts of it to the seven homeowners who are impacted by the road. And so my request is that you would consider an irrevocable encroachment easement instead of the license agreement that we're currently working on with you in the county. And I'd just like to add that everybody we've worked with up there with this has been great. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thanks, John. Good seeing you again.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to Item F, Consent Items. Number one, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $24,617.97. Number two, requests for approval of warrants 105844 through 105894 and 492693 through 492775 in the amount of $3,363,889.17. Item three, summary of warrants and purchase orders. Mr. Ricky Hatch, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We issued five purchase orders this week for $25,000. Forty-one percent of that amount, or $10,000, is for the library to purchase concrete repair supplies. As far as checks, we issued 134 warrants for $3.4 million. Forty-four percent of that amount, or $1.5 million, is road construction on 12th Street. Fourteen percent, or $486,000, is for the conference center remodel. We had two items at 11% or about $370,000 each. One is for paramedic services, an extraction tool and a vehicle retrofit for paramedics. The other is for dispatch, and that is primarily software maintenance. As far as the top five vendors that we paid this week, Staker &amp; Parsons Companies, $1.6 million, Hogan &amp; Associates Construction, $437,000, Motorola Solutions, $337,000, Ogden City Corporation, $172,000, and Everbridge Incorporated, $141,000.
Any questions for Mr. Hatch?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay. Item four, requests for approval of new business licenses. Number five, requests for approval of an amendment to a contract by and between Weaver County and Bouchelle &amp; Wissin P LLC for an adjustment to the lease term. Number six, requests for approval of a change order on a contract by and between Weaver County and Asphalt Construction and Excavating Company for the Fairways 4100 North Road Extension Project. Number seven, requests for approval of a letter of concurrence and local match agreement by and between Weaver County and Wasatch Front Regional Council to hire a consultant using a grant to inspect and analyze 2550 South Corridor to provide safety recommendations. Number eight, requests for approval of a guarantee agreement by and between Weaver County and Rocky Mountain Power, allowing the Friends of the Weaver Morgan Children's Justice Center Board to split out their power account from the counties at the building they own, which used to be occupied by the CJC. Commissioners, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve those consent items, as you articulated one through, including eight.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G, action items. Number one, requests for approval of the final reading of ordinance 2025-22 of the County Commissioners of Weaver County updating the Weaver County Code of Ordinances to reflect the recent adoption of an increase to the transient room tax rate. Mr. Chris Crockett.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a second reading of an ordinance just to update our transient room tax ordinance to comply with state code. There's been no changes since the first reading, so it's the same as was initially presented to you.
Any questions or comments?
None for me.
If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, on motion, we approve ordinance 2025-22, or the second reading is presented by Mr. Crockett, or presented earlier than the first reading, so it's all good.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Horn?
Good morning, Commissioners. Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-22. Commissioner Frower?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
And Chair Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. Number two, requests for approval of Resolution 39-2025 of the County Commissioners of Weaver County, appointing a trustee to the boards of the Mount Ogden Public Infrastructure District's numbers one, two, and three. Mrs. Skeen.
Good morning, Commissioners. At the last Commission meeting, I presented the application for David Ratchford to fulfill the remainder of term for Jim Hill, and at that time, I was waiting for a vote of verification from Catherine Clausner. And so I'm just asking for your approval to appoint Catherine Clausner to fill the remaining term of Adam Suez, who has resigned, and her term would expire December 31st of 2025.
Any questions, Commissioners? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve Resolution 39-2025, as presented by Ms. Stacy Skeen, and appointing those two members to the Mount Ogden Public Infrastructure District's numbers one, two, and three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for Resolution 39-2025. Commissioner Frower?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
And Chair Bollos.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Number three, requests for approval of a contract by and between Weaver County and Asphalt Construction and Excavating Company for construction of a pathway along the Fairways Drive Road project. Ashley Toman, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you... Sorry?
Good morning.
Oh, thank you.
Just saying good morning back, huh?
It is a great morning.
It is. Looking forward to this exciting presentation, too.
Yes, this is a great contract. We, as you know, are under construction on the road extension 4100 North, and we had feedback from the public of interest in the trail. As we discussed this with the contractor, it made sense to try and get this done with this road project. And so in working with our procurement office and our attorney's office, this short contract was created to be able to use the contractor there and follow all the procurement rules and get this work done with this road project. So this contract is a contract to build the trail next to the road and use trails' impact fees to accomplish that. And this should all be done this year, I believe, by October 1st.
Great. Any questions?
Weather pending.
Any questions for Mr. Toman?
No comment.
Please.
This is just another proof that this particular body is very interested in active transportation, that we care about being able to move people other than a car, and this is no exception to that, provide a beautiful scenic pathway that will eventually all loop together in one magnificent network. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the presentation that was presented with regards to the Weaver County and Asphalt Construction Excavating to get this finished, as Mr. Toman's presented this morning.
And I'll second that with a comment, if I might. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Ashley for the work he's done on not only the pathway, but on that road. Commissioner Harvey and I had an opportunity to meet with several residents this past Friday, and it's the first time I'd seen that since initial construction started. That's going to be a great improvement for the residents of that portion of Ogden Valley to give them easier access out of the development where a lot of construction, new development is going on. I would say that, as Mr. Loomis said in his public comments, there are some things that we probably need to look at in terms of potential easements, licensing. You know, the situation, because of the lack of setback that was given on that initial approval back, what, 20 or 25 years ago, that we now have to deal with, is problematic. But again, I understand the concern of the residents up there. I would feel the same way that they do, but again, it's no fault of the county. I told the residents up there on Friday, if that was approved today, it wouldn't be approved with basically what I'm going to call a zero setback, backyard, whatever it may be. But it gives us the opportunity to work with those residents. Ashley's done a great job, along with the contractor, already mitigating that with some berms, some landscaping, and I think they have, the residents up there have our word that we will work as far as we can, as long as we stay within county and state ordinance, to work with that group. Again, but it's somewhat self-inflicted, but we're happy to deal with it, so.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Ashley, and I appreciate the Commissioners going up and spending some time there with the residents, too. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we second you?
I seconded it with comment.
Oh, that's good. Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a long second, sorry.
It was. Number four, requests to approve the contract with Deco Secure and Weaver County to provide document sharing services for the Weaver County Attorney's Office. Mr. Chris Crockett.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a contract to replace a company that we previously worked with, ShareFile. This deals with document sharing between different agencies, which we use heavily when we prosecute cases. In this contract, one of the things that I was particularly mindful of is their ability to procure and maintain cyber liability insurance, which is becoming increasingly more difficult to obtain and is becoming more and more of a threat. So we have verified that this company does indeed have that liability policy, and it is written into our contract. This contract, right now, is prorated from March to... This actually got through where we noticed that a contract hadn't been formally signed, and so we're doing a bit of cleanup work with this to make sure that we have all of the protections that we need for this. But it's prorated from March 2025 through December of 2025, and then there's an option to renew each year for up to five years. So for the first year, it's $39,000, and then each year after that would be $49,000.
Any questions?
None. Happy to make a motion when you're ready.
Please.
So I'd move to approve the contract with Deco Secure and Weaver County to provide document sharing services for the Weaver County Attorney's Office, as presented by Mr. Chris Crockett this morning.
Before I make that second, I'd like a question, Madam Chair. Do we have the money and the budget for that?
Yes, we went through all of the, we spoke with all of the appropriate departments. This one was just, when we saw the level of risk that was there, we wanted a formal, actual, written contract, just with the sensitive nature, and so we just wanted to make sure that we had that cyber liability insurance. But no, this replaces our old ShareFile agreement, which was actually going to be more money than this contract is.
Thank you for that explanation. A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Number five, discussion and/or action on a rezone ordinance 2025-23 and development agreement for the proposed Westbridge Meadows Development, a master plan community that will rezone approximately 1,400 acres of property located within the area south of the Union Pacific Railroad between the Weaver River and 7500 West. The zones being proposed include a master planned development overlay zone, MPDOZ, and a variety of single-family dwelling, R1, two-family dwelling, R2, and multifamily dwelling, R3 zones, as well as the Form Based Zone, FB, mixed uses, and the Open Space O1 Zone. Charlie Ubert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, you guys have looked at this project a couple of times now, well, several times over work session, and now for the second time today in a formal meeting. You had a public hearing on it in one of your last meetings earlier in August. So the memo I put together for you guys at the front of that staff report has a matrix of questions that you brought up at the last meeting, as well as those that we discussed in the subsequent work session with answers associated to it. I can go through each one of those, put it on the record, or if you guys have looked at that and you're comfortable, we can move on, whichever way you guys want to go.
This is a big enough deal, Madam Chair. I'd like to hear those questions and make sure they're answered.
The ones on the memo?
No.
Would you like me to read them?
No.
I can go through them.
Okay.
Yeah, I can summarize them. So let's start with the top. Question number one, or comment number one, was a request to consider 20% of the housing to be reserved for 55-plus living situations. One of the things that the applicants have provided is a market study from a third party, third-party market study. It's thick, and you guys, we've actually included it as part of the development agreement so that we can see that that market study is what this project is being based off of. The market study shows that there is a need for a wide variety of housing, whether it's senior housing, whether it's newlywed housing, single-family, multifamily housing, there's a wide variety of need. 20% for 55-plus housing, that would result in about 2,640 units. That's a lot, and the market study doesn't support the need for that, but the market study does support the need for the wide variety, including some level of senior housing. So there is an opportunity for us to make sure that requirement is in there. One thing that the applicants have done, well, actually, there's a couple of other related comments. So another related comment is consideration for homeowner occupancy, and then last comment is how do we find a way to tie accountability for the market study, for the market study's promotion of a variety of housing to the project and the future of the project? So a couple of ways that we're thinking about doing that, and here's what the applicant has suggested. Right now, because the proposal is based on that market study with the wide variety of housing options, in the future, if any other alternative comes up where the developer or a future developer or sub-developer doesn't want to address that variety of housing options, let's say they just want to do all single-family, whatever it is, they have to come back to the county with a market study and ask for a change to the agreement. So if their market study comes, they would come back to you guys, and you guys would say, ooh, that market study shows all single-family, that doesn't show the variety that you told us we were going to get. You can reject that and say, no, we're just going to stick with what your market study from the origination of the agreement, what it said. So you've got the opportunity to reject any changes to that variety of housing, which includes homeowner occupancy housing as well. Okay, next comment, clarify that the county will not provide water sewer services. That's already in the agreement. I give you a section for that agreement. We put some pretty good emphasis on that, that the county does not provide those. They need to go find those services, and they're working that out. Emphasize that 2550 South access needs to come to fruition before the 1800 South access, the river access, the bridges going over the river. The new version of the agreement that you have in front of you makes that adjustment. In fact, the two adjustments that you see in the new version of the agreement that's in front of you is, number one, that adjustment, so 2550's first, and then, number two, the tie to the market study in the exhibits and the requirement from the agreement that says any changes require and requires a new market study, and the Commissioners have full discretion to reject that. We did put a little bit of flexible language in there. In case, you guys, in the future, the Commission decides that you want 1800 first, you can go ahead and make that call, but it says that the applicant doesn't have the choice. It's either 2550 or whatever the Commissioners ask for. So keeping that flexible for you, but not necessarily flexible for the applicant. Pedestrian bridges over the river, separate from the street bridges. We have discussed how those street bridges do need to have pedestrian facilities, but that the applicant's responsible for at least three additional bridges going over the Weaver River, and that's already in the agreement. We did that similar, in a similar way that we did to the Bennett Agreement from earlier this, or last month, I should say, where we're agreeing that we can help use impact fees to offset those costs, but those bridges need to be in. The idea being that both sides of the Weaver River will eventually be a large public park or parkway that has the trails on both sides with potential park nodes along it. We've also added one more in that you guys might not have thought about. There is a requirement for bridges to go over the railroad as well. At a time that the county is ready for them, or the developer or the county has acquired property on the north side of the railroad tracks, we're asking for two bridges going over the railroad. That's a little bit more of a heavy lift going over the river. You're dealing with the state mostly. Going over the railroad, you're dealing with the railroad. It can take some time. So we haven't put a specific timeframe on when those are going to be done, but we have said that at the time they're doing the active transportation facilities along the rail line, because we do have a pathway that's supposed to run along the future transit line, that is along the rail line, at that time, if the county or the developer has acquired property on the north side, we would require those bridges to go in at that time. Weed management along the Weaver River, how do we make sure that the Weaver River Park Corridor does not turn into weeds? We've actually addressed this three different ways, because that was a really big concern that the Planning Commission had as well. Number one, the requirement is that the developer, through an HOA or through the developers' means themselves, maintain that park corridor, but not just maintain the park corridor, maintain the parks that are going into the project as well. And that is until the county or the park district are ready to take over operations and maintenance of those facilities. If the county or the park district is never ready to take over operations or maintenance, then it would be on the HOA, Community Foundation, developer, however the developer sets it up to maintain that long term. So we do have some leverage in there. Let's say, for example, how do we make sure we enforce that? Well, if the River Parkway goes to weeds, we stop issuing building permits. I mean, that's the most extreme way of doing it, and if we stop issuing building permits, that'll really motivate someone to get a lawnmower out or to go spray some weeds and make sure that gets taken care of. As you guys saw from the project that the applicant has done in Utah County, those public parks that were in those communities were operated and maintained by the developer or the HOA, even though they were owned by a public agency. So, and my understanding, after talking with the developer, is there's at least one of those parks, after the developer put a bunch of improvements into it, the city came in and said, ooh, we're going to need to use this park for a different thing, and so they made it like a utility facility. So the jurisdiction has a lot of opportunity with the ownership of that acreage, or if it's the park district, a lot of opportunity with ownership of the acreage, but the liability of maintenance would be on that developer or the HOA, until the city's ready to take it over, or the county in this case. Let's see, how do we make sure we protect existing taxpayers? There's actually a lot in the development agreement to enable that. I give you citations to the agreement. This is just the ones that talk about taxing specifically. Number one, we're saying that anyone who moves into this project is agreeing by virtue of purchasing land in the development that has this development agreement applied to it, is agreeing that they won't protest additional tax opportunities from the county. We know this is going to be really important for a couple of reasons. Number one, if that area ever incorporates, creates themselves a city, they're going to need to have municipal services, municipal taxes, all that kind of stuff. We know until incorporation happens, that the county's going to need to be providing those services, and we're going to need to provide those services at a higher level than we do most of our rural areas, because that's just the urbanized nature of development. And so we want to make sure that the developer and anyone who the developer sells to has agreed by virtue of signing that real estate contract, has agreed that they will cooperate with the county and not protest, if you guys have to engage in the truth and taxation hearing process and apply a different tax rate or tax levy or special assessment area. There's a wide variety of revenue generating options that you guys have available to help offset those costs, so that the cost to provide for this development is not spread out across other people who are rural out there.
Let me interrupt you, because we don't have the ability, as a county, some of the tools that are available to cities, and so that's important.
Very important, yes.
Thank you.
And I think if we keep down the line that we've been discussing in work sessions, hopefully, over the next half a year... process and apply a different tax rate or tax levy or, or special assessment area. There's a wide variety of revenue generating options that you guys have available to help offset those costs, so that the cost to provide for this development is not spread out across other people who are involved out there.
Let me interrupt you, because we don't have the ability as a county, some of the tools that are available to cities, and so that's important.
Very important, yes.
Thank you.
And I think if we, if we keep on the, down the line that we're, we've been discussing in work sessions, hopefully over the next half year or so, we'll be looking at a different tax rate for newly established developments so that we can provide the services in those higher density developments, not just this one, but other ones that we've been working on. So we'll continue to talk about that over the next half year or so to address that. Another concern was floodwater mitigation. It may, may have sounded from staff's presentation that that was optional. It's not, it's required, and that's in the development agreement. They've got to do floodwater mitigation, but they also can't do any development until they do a master planned stormwater and floodwater plan. And that plan isn't complete, according to the way the development agreement is written, until the county engineer signs off on it. So you guys have a lot, you guys will have a lot of influence with the county engineer to make sure that that stormwater management plan works well. One thing about stormwater and floodwater management that the developer's kind of excited about and that the neighboring DWR is kind of excited about is the opportunity to help create more wetlands for the Ogden Bay Waterfowl area. If we could route the water into those areas, or excess water that's coming off of this development into those areas and let the state figure out what to do with that water, that would really help provide more habitat for migratory birds. But the other thing that we're looking at doing, and that we do have a requirement in the agreement for, is to find ways to also bypass the Ogden Bay. So if the Ogden Bay is inundated with water, like we've seen in the past, that water doesn't have to back up the river channel and flood people upstream, we can find ways and canals and sloughs or whatever to keep that water going around the checkpoints in the Ogden Bay if, if the bay ever gets too full. Dark sky protections was brought up. That's right in the agreement. Same thing that we're doing with most other development agreements, is we're saying the county's existing outdoor lighting ordinance that we're mostly applying in the Ogden Valley is now applicable through development agreement to this development, as well as all of the new developments that you guys have approved with development agreements over the last couple of years. Making sure there's flexibility for the location of the West Weber Corridor Freeway, that's really important, and that is already in the development agreement. Basically, the way the agreement reads is that the actual location of where that freeway will go is still subject to negotiation by the county and by the developer. What it says is, on the front end, they'll set aside property for it in the general configuration of where the map shows, but over time, as UDOT and as the county and as the developer sees need for changes in that, the agreement says that both the county and the developer will work with each other to make sure we establish the, where that freeway can go in the most opportune place for a freeway logistics to, to be located, which might not even be in the project, right? But that corridor will be in that project, and so it could be a county road at that time. It also says that if the freeway isn't located within that project, that the county will work with the applicant on figuring out how to give some of that land back so that they can develop the area that was slated for potential freeway.
No more density, correct?
No changes in density.
Thank you.
The number is, it would be capped in the development agreement. Oh, space and opportunities for a future transit line and stations, that's already in the agreement. If you were to look at the community plan, you could see two different locations for transit stations. They've got about a mile between them, which is a pretty good buffer for light rail to stop every mile or two, and so these guys will have two of those. And they are proposing in their community plan to have some more urbanized mixed uses around those transit stations. We're not going to see those transit stations materialize overnight. It's going to take quite a bit of residential dwelling units out there before UTA even agrees, or whoever the transit authority is at the time agrees to provide any services out there. But as we know from the Daybreaker Project, you get enough pressure, through development pressure, you'll, you'll get some extensions of those transportation facilities, whether it's light rail or BRT or, or whatever it may be. It'd be kind of, kind of a cool future if we've got the existing BRT that's here in Ogden going out there, picking up people, bringing them up to the university, bringing them up to the hospital, bringing them into downtown Ogden. That'd be a pretty cool, single BRT route in the future if we could ever get to that point. And then last question, address what happens if the development creeps westward or northward, and I'm going to add eastward, they can't go southward. What happens there is they have to come back and ask you guys. They're not entitled to creep. Any new land that they bring into the project, they've got to come to you and amend their development agreement or create a new development agreement for those new properties. The applicant has looked at opportunities for expansion onto adjacent properties, maybe even north of the railroad as well. And I suspect as we work on our amendment to the Western Weber General Plan to look at that 12th Street 900 South Corridor a little bit more closely, as well as those other corridors, we might find opportunities to work together with the applicant on that kind of stuff. But nothing happens without your guys' consent. They're confined to the geographic area that the development agreement is applied to. I think that captured everything. Is there anything you guys can think of that I didn't, that I forgot to address?
You went right down the list, so I think you covered it.
I have one, one last question.
Go ahead.
This is, you've done great work, and I wanted those who may ever have questions to be able to hear those. That was the reason for the redundancy there, to go through that. Thank you, thank you for taking part of that. My only question is, is not that this body would, but some future body, peoples other than us sitting here, what happens if they don't agree with that? You, you said in the agreement, market study, and the market study has said this and this and this, but you know, no, nobody understands the property better than those who live here. So a market study could be done by someone that's not from here, and I'll just not go further than that. But what happens if this body doesn't agree with that market study? I don't, I'd like to hear your answer to that.
Yeah, the existing market study or the potential future?
Either.
Okay, so the existing market study, if you don't agree with what it says, then I would suggest maybe take it a step back from taking any action on the item. They do, they have provided some certification from the folks who did that market study, but we've got to have some sense of comfort that that market study does actually speak to the needs of Weber County. In the future, if changes are desired by the developer and they bring in a market study to support those changes, you've got full discretion to reject that as well. So anything that's beyond, if we go 10, 15 years in the future and we see that there is not that variety materializing the way that the market study said it would and should, that would be a breach of the contract, and we would pull them in and figure out what's the problem, what's going on. Maybe even if we needed to, stop giving building permits until they addressed that, that difference. If some future market study comes down the line and says, no, the only thing the market's going to support out there is a bunch of large lots, single-family residential, you guys have an opportunity at that point to say, you're not getting that. You're getting what you told us you were going to get this.
So, so the reason I bring this up, Madam Chair, is we did a market study, so to speak. We, our planning commission invested thousands and thousands of hours creating a master plan out there, or kind of a market study several years ago, and we found that just a few years later, this whole thing's changed. So the market study could be good for today, just like information technology type segment. This, our world is changing around us rapidly. I don't want to be locked into a market study from even three or five years ago, because that, that's going to, that's going to continue to change quickly in this area. So that's very, very concerning to me.
Makes, makes perfect sense. And yeah, looking at it from the other side, not want to be locked into what, what we have now. Market, market does change, that's for sure. And so if things do change in the future, you guys have full discretion and opportunity to work with the developer to make those necessary adjustments as well. So it just, basically the way it works is they can't, they don't have the authority or the discretion to make those changes. You guys have the authority to make those changes with them.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else? Comments?
Yeah, comment if I might.
Okay.
So I think there's a couple of things we know about this project that are positive. Number one, we know that Weber County is to continue to grow. We know that Weber County, along with the state of Utah, is in desperate need of affordable or attainable housing, depending on what definition you want to use. We know that the future for Western Weber County is very bright in terms of economic development, in terms of commercial, industrial jobs, Commissioner, that we'll see future generations be able to take advantage of. Now, when I say future, that's what I mean. It was just 10 or 15, 20 years down the road, 50 years down the road, who knows? The market will decide that. Not anybody sitting here on this stand today or in the future will decide that. That will be determined by the market. And one thing the market does is it behaves in the way that drives whatever the needs are, the desires are of the public at that point in time. If that's housing, that's what it'll be. If it's commercial, so I don't think we can sit here today and say, this is what we want to see in 20 years. I look back over the last 50 years. Anytime I've tried to outguess the market, I've usually been wrong, and it's taught me a lesson. The market usually wins, because that is the desire, that's what the consumer decides they want. So I think this is the best guess moving forward that we have. Are there some hurdles? Absolutely. We know that water, sewer, road infrastructure, bridges are a big factor that need to take place before the market will decide what they want out there. Once that's in, and when that's in, that's when the market will determine and decide, here's the type of product that suits us, suits our family, suits our friends that want to live in this environment, that wants to have access to jobs and what they would have in Western Weber County on ground that right now is probably not the most productive ground that we see out there. So I think there's some benefits. Are there a lot of hurdles? Absolutely. Do we want to try to second guess what we're going to do 10, 15, 20 years, 50 years from now? I won't be around, so I don't have to worry about that. But I don't think it's right for this commission or any other commissions to say, we know what's going to happen in 50 years, because I don't think we do. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things to add. Commissioner Frouer talked about hurdles, and I think it's important for the public to understand that all those hurdles will be cleared before any part of the project moves forward. That the, that the approval today is, really lays the groundwork for the success of this project and that there, there aren't going to be all these homes popping up within the next 10 years, right? 30 to 50 years puts all of us in this room out of, out of our positions by then. So it's important to lay the groundwork and to plan for this, what I call city center. Otherwise, otherwise it will just develop, you know, a piece here and a piece there. I think it's really important to have this plan laid out. And because of that, I, I think it's important that, and this is for Mr. Brant, so I don't, he'll listen to the minutes, to the recording, I guess, to write the minutes, but I would like the memo that Charlie reviewed to be part of the, part of the minutes. I know the development agreement will be, but I really appreciate your citations in this chart where you redirect us to the section and the page number. It will address those concerns that were the reason for the table in August, and I think that's important to be available to the public from now into the future. So I appreciate your, your work in, in doing that. So if there are no other questions, Commissioners, then I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezone ordinance 2025-23 and the development agreement for Westbridge Meadows.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-23. Commissioner Frouer?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Charlie, for all your work. Item H, Commissioners?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.